Oh.
He said that monitor.
Just, um.
He's not gonna open them up, he's not gonna turn the monitor.
Relax a little bit.
We're up and good, yes, we are up and running, so call to order. Um, amendment slash approval of the agenda. Motion to be made.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Okay, without any additions or corrections?
And I'll, and I'll second it, we don't, we're not doing a flag salute or...
Yes, of course we will, that's, I don't know why that's not on here, let's do the, uh, flag salute.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Somebody tried to trick us with this agenda.
Now I will second that motion.
Okay. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries three to zero. I see no public here, Dave, did you wanna do a public comment or wait till after the presentations when it says public comment? You got an agenda, there's, there's agenda in the door. Um, presentations, Commissioner Tros, Board of Commissioners, Rules of Order.
Thanks Chair, um, I, so I did some research. Um, and some, calling around to some colleagues and, um, what I learned is that there is essentially, uh, three main rules of order that are utilized. Obviously, we all know Roberts. The other one is called Rosenberg, and the third one is called Democratic Rules of Order. And, um, so here's, um, here's my summary of what I kind of found. Is that, um, Roberts is very complicated. It's about seven hundred pages, um, it was developed in the eighteen hundreds for Congress. It, uh, it, it's an interesting set of rules because, um, somebody who knows how to utilize them can use that to an advantage to somebody who doesn't know how to use them as well. It's definitely designed for, uh, larger governing bodies, right? When you're dealing with many, many individuals. The next one was Rosenberg's. Uh, Rosenberg's was, was created, um, much more recently. And it's, 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 it's a simplified version. There's not a lot of different complicated motions that can be made. It, it, it was designed for smaller governments. And then there's the democratic process, which is the simplest of all the forms. It's about a, I think it's an eighteen-page document in its total. And, um, it, from what I gathered, is more geared towards, like nonprofit boards, community boards, right? Where you get, you know, me, me have a lot of people that aren't as savvy with process and so, but they still need to get things done. It's very straightforward. And so, uh, you know, I, looking at them, um, I think, I think there's, there's, I think there's great stuff to pull, from each, and, um, you know, there's, there's some things that are, that, you know, that we, we may wanna look at as a whole and say, is that, is that dated? I'll give you an example, um, and Medford's actually doing this right, right now. And one of the things that they are hung up on, and this is just one tiny deal of the whole thing, but it just shows kind of how contrasting things are, but, you know, there's a, there's a norm that you, you stand up, you provide your, your name and address, uh, prior to speaking. And, um, and that's, that's a norm in, in many governments. And, um, the point that they were breaking up is, is bringing up is that, with that rule, um, and how people can utilize, um, information, social media, et cetera, at the touch of their hand, that, uh, there's a lot of people who are uncomfortable speaking in public now because of having to have that disclosure. So, you know, uh, after going back and forth, you know, an easy way to possibly, you know, write that into the rules is to say on the speaker slip, you can, you provide your address so that, and email if we need to contact you after the meeting. That way it's not put out in public, but yet we still retain that information. And the, and the, and from what I understand, like on that piece, just that piece, the, the intention was to prevent, prevent non-citizen members to come in, um, and disrupt meetings, right?
Had nothing to do with.
Right.
Yeah, they weren't even, they weren't a citizen of the county or...
Gotcha. So, um, you know, so there's a lot to look at, and so I guess, what, what I would maybe suggest is, um, you know, that, that we agree that one of us works with, county council and director of operations to, um, to kind of bring back a formal proposal, an idea, kind of look at them all, combine what we think is most, um, prevalent and useful and to guide, and then, and then, and then have something to actually present as a, as a, as a working document that we may have to amend or whatever, um, after we get to looking at it, but there may be things that we agree upon that we don't agree upon, but coming back with something like that.
It would really be nice to have a set, um, uh, you know, kind of a complete set of rules that would, that would, that, that can go forward when you were all dead and gone, that would be nice. And then there would give, give some, some, uh, structure to the entire operation, really, I think, is good.
Well, and I'd like to see some signage too put up, uh, before you come in for the people that are going to come in and speak so they clearly understand, uh, what, what rules they're following. And I know that a lot of times, you know, we try to be as courteous and respectful as possible, but, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll be on a passionate topic, uh, something passionate to the community. And, uh, people will speak, we'll be in a discussion about it, and then someone will walk up to the microphone and start to speak or raise their hand in the back of the room or, and then we completely go off order trying to accommodate that. And I think if we had some signage and we had some more structure to that, it would make the meetings more efficient and be fair and equal to everybody.
That signage should probably be on outside the room as well as on, mounted on the carpet area.
Mounted on the carpet, yes, our, our carpeted.
Thank you. Pointing that out.
Tack it in. Yeah, so for sure, there's, I think there's a lot of things that we can be, to be more, um, effective and productive. And like, for instance, in speakers, um, I was looking at some, some locations, they have, like we have, where there's a designated speaker opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, and then others, um, they, um, on the agenda slip, if it's pertaining to an agenda item, they afford the public comment before the discussion takes place. So, you know, we're, like, for now, we're, we're discussing this, but prior to this, it would have been, does anybody have a public comment? I see there's, there's one person who has public comment regarding the rules of order. Would you like to say your piece, and then we go into business.
Yeah, that's how we did it at the port, it seemed like it was a lot more on point, you know? Cause otherwise you just, it's sort of like you're just letting him talk and then, and you're down.
Sure. On that public comment thing, they say, you know, they, everybody speaks at one time, but they're, they're, that, what they're speaking about might be number seven on the, yeah, on the action discussion items, so the city does that, like, you know, it's just at a meeting and... So, yeah, that's, that's a good...
Yeah, so, I mean, there's a lot of different forms, it's just I think we find one that's gonna have some, that we can use, that'll be sustainable, that, um, like Ted said, can provide some structure.
So simplistic is better, I prefer that.
Agreed. Keep it simple.
Yeah, and you've already, you're already pretty deep into this, so makes sense for you to be the guy.
I would, no problem, absolutely, yeah. And I would be happy to work with Ted and, and also kind of some of the other colleagues that I've called around to get some...
Yeah.
Ideas, um, on how they, how they, how they like their systems, what they would change. Okay, well, certainly, will do.
Okay.
You're still up bud.
Okay, um, next one is the...
Role of Commissioners Liaisons, Commissioner Liaisons.
So, obviously, um, this topic is, um, really vital right now with the, um, decision of the, um, county director of operations and, um, ensuring that we have, uh, the, the right communication flow, right? And I, and I, and I think, you know, there's been so much back and forth, back and forth between, there's a county admin, there's not a county admin, there's a director of operations, and it might be, you know, it's just back and forth. And so, um, I think we owe it to, um, the departments and everybody to have clear and concise expectations on our role and their role with us. So, um, I printed out the, a couple of things, you know, I think, I printed out that the original, um, the original, uh, uh, resolution with the, um, with the, uh, liaison roles that was repealed. And I think, um, I think it's okay, I think it's, it's, it's worth looking at, but, but obviously, this is, this is, this is built with the idea of not having a single point of contact, right? So, we, we may wanna look at this and, and, and build it into whatever those liaison, um, duties look like.
Combined with the...
Correct, but I also think in the midst of that, we, we, it, this is, this is, this, this is symbiotic with the, the director of operations' job description, right? It has to be symbiotic with that, um, in, you know, because we can't have, we can't have fumbles, right? So, I think, looking at that job description, updating what needs to be updated in it, and utilizing it as a platform to build what the liaison roles and responsibilities look like. You know, uh, the, the fundamental basis, as I knew it, uh, for liaison roles was, it was a bridge of communication, uh, to and from departments. The board, the board, the, the board liaison was responsible to communicate, um, board actions that had occurred in meetings and, and pertinent discussion topics that had to do with those particular departments, alright? And the, the, the department liaison was to communicate department needs, um, agenda, potential agenda items, and, um, budgeting, um, budgeting questions, things that have to do with finance and budget. And it was their bridge to the, to the BOC office for those lines of communication. Obviously, a lot of that changes, right, with the role of director of operations. And so, again, I think this is, this, this may require, um, an individual, uh, working with, I don't know if, if, if it's an individual working with county council, if it's a, if it's an, if it's a, if it's a, maybe a, um, you know, a task force or a committee of three or four people, try to, try to work on this and build it. I don't know what the best action is, um, but I definitely know it needs, it needs, um, it's gonna need some hours of work to build so that it is thoroughly vetted, uh, and again, something that is sustainable.
So there's two things that, uh, there's only three liaisons, so that's pretty simple.
Yeah.
So, but there's a lot of department heads. So what I'd really like to have is input from the department heads to know what works best for them to be effective.
What are they looking for, yeah.
And, and then build on that from there. I would like to see some, uh, an agreement that we can maybe have right now that will help facilitate communication, and that is, if, if, um, I am not the liaison with, let's just say hypothetically, I wanna go talk to maintenance. I've, I've got some questions for maintenance about something that I think you have maintenance, right?
Yeah.
Jay has maintenance, okay.
Doesn't matter.
So, so let's say I wanna, I wanna go talk to maintenance, um, I've had some, some complaints from other department heads about some issue in the building, and I wanna go talk to them about that. Before I do that, I think it's important, from a de-confliction perspective, to go to Ted first and say, hey FYI, I'm gonna go out and talk to maintenance about this ish, this issue. And he may say, oh hey, wait a minute, uh, that's from brought to me, I've already gone out there and done this, and Commissioner Herzog has already gone out there and had this conversation. Oh, okay, give me an update on that. And, uh, then it, it, it won't cause an unnecessary amount of time for the department head, and it'll just be more efficient with the resources, so...
Yeah.
If we can have that agreement, I think that, that professional agreement will help facilitate communication. We can do that right now. And, um, and then if the department heads can get together and talk about, uh, the role of a liaison and how it would benefit them most, whatever that mechanism is, I'd like to hear about that.
Agreed. And, I don't know if it's a separate topic, but I think it's, I, I think it, I think it's also beneficial to try to bring some of our other county electeds into the fold and...
Yeah.
And, and try to re-instill some of those liaison relationships as designed, you know, like a bridge, um, of communication, you know, that, that, because it, the director of operations, um, essentially becomes the direct report for a lot, our department heads.
Yeah.
And, um, I, I, I see, you know, as it evolves, our, our liaison roles become almost primary to the other electeds communicating to and from the, the BOC office. Whereas the department heads are communicating through the director of operations, who's, who then is communicating to us.
Yeah, I do feel like the communication between other elected officials here at the county has been good, good. But if there's a way to improve it, I'm all for that.
Yeah.
Well, but when you were here as an employee, did you have, uh, you weren't elected, but elected officials used to have a liaison commissioner, and they kind of, we kind of went away from that at some point, I don't know when.
Well, so when, when, when I was an employee, the, the, the liaison department head relationship was, was just that. It was a, it was, it was a bridge of communication. I came to talk to my liaison when I had something to put on the agenda, when I had, um, departmental budget questions. And that was pretty much the, the majority of my communication with the BOC office. And, uh, and it was, it was very much that way with almost all, it seemed, departments at the time. And I think in the shift, you know, we, I was here when, um, John Hitt was hired as the director of administration, and then shortly after, it was, um, it was, uh...
The other guy.
Schroder.
Yeah.
And, um, but I think what had ended up happening is, 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 is we went from that model and then we switched gears, and then as we switched back and forth a couple of times, it became very, it became very confusing on what the role really was. I think when the director of administration, you know, was removed, then it was, then commissioners felt like they had to fill the void of oversight individually as a liaison to that department. Which is interesting, right, because as I understand it, um, each of us individually has almost no authority, but as a board, we have, we have, we have enormous authority. And so, I think, it just, it, different personalities probably over time saw their role in a different view, and I think that's why it's pertinent that we have...
So, so I have, I have a recommendation, and how about, uh, we have, well, we should have a managers meeting soon. At that managers meeting, we can hear input from department heads regarding that topic.
And let's have, let's have all the commissioners attend that as well, and all the electeds.
Okay.
And let's invite everybody, yeah?
And, and that discussion can be in that meeting, and then you can take away from that and incorporate that into the first issue of the rules. And, um, make one final document that encompasses it all.
Okay.
That work?
Yeah, and then how do, who, who, who do we want to be the lead on building this, um, this, this protocol, this, this document? Between both, the, I think the job description probably needs to be reworked as we look through this, as well as, um, creating the liaison, uh, expectations to, to complement that. So I think we need to identify somebody who's gonna follow through on that.
How about all three of us, look at that, mark it up, get it to Ted?
Okay.
And, I mean, that's just a spitball in here, but we can all look at it, make additions, corrections.
So we'll have a rough draft review, submit our review for a final draft.
Yeah. And then Ted, you bring back a final draft?
Yeah.
Perfect. Yep. That's, that's great, okay. And then the next one?
Yep.
This one I ju, is just a discussion topic on, 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 on us. Setting a time to establish some board goals and priorities. What is it that this board would like to see accomplished this year? What is in our purview to accomplish this year? What are some of the most, um, pressing things that should be, uh, identified? So that we also have, um, a, a common measuring stick to come back to and say, hey, we're here, and something to hold ourselves accountable to, you know, at the end of the year, and how far did we get to this? Some of them might be long-term strategic, who knows, right, where it goes, but I think having those and having a common language of where, you know, those go, um, are, 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 are vital to moving forward. It's really hard to move forward as one, but if we can identify a few key items that we all view as, as very fundamental, I think we can, we can, we can get stuff done in that manner.
I like it. You know, I, I like it, I want to be held accountable, so, um, I like that. And so are you thinking, uh, a top three priorities for the year, or are you thinking, uh...
I definitely wouldn't go over five, cause then it gets a little muddy, right? It gets very difficult, but yeah, somewhere in there, three to five.
Okay, and we'd wanna do that probably the first meeting?
We'd wanna do it, you know, it will...
You know what, how about second meeting, because in election years, you'll have, the first meeting will be, you'll have somebody brand new stepping into that, so maybe the second meeting, second meeting in the first month.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely before budget season, so that if any of these priorities require resources, then we're, we're, we're able to, to look at that, at that time.
And remember, I think that you can discuss this, that idea, that you wanna figure out a way to make those decisions outside of this workshop, you know?
Right. Yeah. So just...
It's so new in the year, we need to have that meeting, we need to have that meeting in March or April.
Oh, it'd be fantastic to get one this year, just to, just to kind of have...
Maybe this, you know...
Might be only two.
Maybe two, one, or three.
Two or three.
But it, you know, cause we got a, you know, pretty new board, and, uh, let's, let's, just have that, you know? Get that hammered out in, uh, one of these sessions, just like this, right? We can't make a, a decision and vote on anything today.
Right.
No.
Even though it is a public meeting, but...
We can have consensus on a date though.
Yeah.
On when we would like to revisit this. And, um, I'm assuming it would probably be in another workshop, and we'd come, come with some ideas and...
Yeah.
Flush them out and try to identify a few.
Yeah.
So, I don't...
I know we were gonna talk about TLT stuff on the, in the next meeting with Monica's here.
Yes.
In a workshop after the board meeting on the fifteenth, is that, am I...
Yes.
Okay.
Cause she's not here until, I think, eleven.
Okay. So, um, I don't know, would it be possible to have that workshop with those two items of... And then we got to...
Why not?
We got to tell the fifteenth to kind of, you know, put our top three in and... Like, so I think we all agree that number one is funding law enforcement, there's some kind of...
Long-term funding.
Long-term...
Funding the insurance department independently from the general fund.
Yeah.
Right, but there might be some strategic plans that build a framework for that, that we need to really look at as well. I mean, that's, I think, an overarching goal for sure. You know, but we, so, so, I mean, those are, those are the big ones, right? For certain.
Yeah.
I mean, would you guys be okay with the twenty-second? Because the fifteenth would be a really long day and I...
Yeah, oh yeah, that's true.
This'll probably require, you know, a lot of, uh...
That's just the following Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
First fifteen, twenty-second?
Actually, we're doing, so we're do, on the fifteenth, we're doing the TSP.
Oh, that.
Not TLT.
Okay, that's that, uh, transport...
Uh, transportation safety, um, plan. That was Rabia telling us.
Then the TLT would be after that?
Yeah, TLT's gonna be subsequent, I think we're doing that, I think the following week.
The twenty-second?
Okay, twenty-second, yeah, and we could do that on the twenty...
We could double it up on the twenty-second without a regular...
Yeah, cause the TSP's gonna be a pretty long one, I think, from what I understand.
Goes into the evening too.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we can do TLT and board priority and goals.
On the twenty-second.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, it's the beginning of Ramadan, is that, is that, have anybody upset, okay?
I'll be able to attend.
There's a dot, so I... Yeah, so it sounds good, twenty-second.
Okay. Thanks, that's all I had.
Okay.
County funding request, Commissioner Alcorn.
All right, let's talk about, um, let's talk about how, so we have, uh, we have, everyone knows we have ARP money. I don't think any of us know exactly what that total is right now, um, because commitments were made to spend some of that money, some of it was spent, some of it's committed to other things and set aside, so it's kind of a moving target. And then there's no way to know what's gonna happen, um, next year or two years from now. There may be some other form of ARP money or, uh, who knows? So, I think it's safe to say that we will probably likely have people that come in and, um, represent their organization, their nonprofit, their, um, their role in the community, and they ask for money. So, the, the, this discussion is about how do we do that? Because right now we don't really have a, a solid, stable mechanism in place to do that. So, what I'd like to get input on and, and clearly defined is, um, first of all, a timeframe to do that. Cause when people walk in here and they ask for money, we're essentially giving them a grant, if you will. So, um, what would the timeframe be, or what would the two of you like to see that timeframe be for that process? So in other words, um, when we would actually fund the money? To me, I would like to see us get through budget, budget's done, complete, we've committed everything, and then maybe July first, that's when we would actually award any funding to any group that was, um, successful in making that application. So, um, then when would we open that process for someone to come in, uh, submit their application, submit a presentation, and then await the decision for the funding? When, when would you recommend that we start it, when would you recommend that we finish it?
Well, I've been a part of quite a few grants, um, and I think, uh, you know, giving the appropriate amount of time, uh, opening it up in terms of, um, for them to get the information to us, uh, generally... I mean, I don't know, I'd say at least, you know, depending on, on how much we're asking for in the application, I mean, a, a, a month at minimum, I would say, before. Even two is good. And then, um, you know, then, then it gives it also time to receive and read and vet and go through. And I would assume, starting after the budget in July one, we would probably wanna have a, a workshop discussion to look at them all formally, and then come out... formally, and then come out of that discussion, having a pretty good idea of what needs to, what can be funded. But, yeah, and then who's gonna design the application process and, and, and look at the requirements, uh, that we're requesting from these, um, potential grantees?
Right, and let's get to that in just a second. Do you agree, do you agree with kinda that timeframe?
Yeah.
So if we were to say, um, if we were to say, first week of July, or? Uh, March first begins the application process.
Okay, I got you, or April, you mean? We're already past March.
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, or May first.
Okay.
How about May first?
Sure, yeah, that gives us plenty of time to build the application.
So May first, you can submit an application. And then, uh, the first workshop in July, we will discuss the applications, and then the following business meeting, we'll make the decision. Does that work?
Sure. Very doable timelines.
Okay. All right, um, then the next would be the actual physical application and what we would want people to submit with that. Now, we have an A R P application, I think Mary Rowe brought them in here.
I have one right here.
Seen them before, is-
I filled that out for the City of Brookings.
Okay.
So I can tell you all about it.
So what if we took that application and used it as a model? And then, uh, we can discuss additional documents that we want, might want, um, an applicant to provide with that?
Did the city have a application too, did you guys give out?
No. Um, no, but we had applied for the A R P county grant for matching funds for Kit Town. Here it is. So, I mean, and it, it was, it was very straightforward, and it was probably one of the easier grant applications to, 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 to fill out. Have you looked at it much to see what?
I have seen it, yeah.
So I, I'd have to look at it on the, uh, from the lens of receiving it, not filling it out to, to see what, um, you know, there could be, you know, in terms of-
I think we could use that document as, as the, uh, model.
Sure.
And just, and then just determine what we would like to include with that. Do we wanna include, uh, profit-loss statement? Do we wanna include, uh, other grants that the organization may already be receiving or? And I, and, and of course, some of this may be non-applicable, um, and I'll, I'll use, uh, David as an example, uh, who's trying to develop multiple housing units and-
David Allen, yeah.
Yeah, so, so he's, he's a good example, um, of an, of an individual who's trying to add value to the community by creating multi-unit, uh, housing. But he, and he, he's potentially could ask for help with that. So, uh, you know, he doesn't have other grant applications in, so that would just be a non-applicable, uh, section in there. But, but maybe with him, we would, we would wanna ask, um, potential earnings, I mean, I'm just throwing ideas out here.
Oh, like a business plan? If, if you have a business plan, it should be for, for whatever you're doing, you know, or some sort of- Well, I, I really think that it is appropriate to have a, a business plan for each grant, what, what you're gonna do with it. You know, we've had, we've had, in my limited experience here, we've had people walk in and say, well, you know, we just wanna throw that money into what we're doing. Well, I think it's important that you, that, that, that is, you know, that, that we understand the scope of what- Cuz I mean, there are a lot of bottomless needs out there, and I think it needs to be clear to, to you guys that what, and to the public, what we're, what we're, what we're contributing to, to a, to a particular effort.
Sure. Well, and, and I will say that every grant application that I've had to fill out, all requested at least two years of financials, Schedule C minimum, and a current year profit and loss. And, um, it's interesting, I called one of the grantees to ask, like, or grantors, what, you know, there's a lot of information. One of the things that caught me off guard was they said, well, we need to make sure that you're gonna be financially stable enough to be able to use the grant long-term.
Right, sure.
And, you know, those are, those are just pretty, pretty important processes.
I think that, that's, I think, that's the part that really concerns me, cuz, you know, I, 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 I've, you know, I've, I'm not, I haven't seen any of these so far, but I have been aware of, you know, entities that have been formed specifically to capture one grant, and, and, you know, that might be appropriate in certain cer- circumstances, but really, you know, you wanna, you wanna be well-informed on that before you go forward.
Well, even when we apply for state grants. For instance, when I applied for the O P R D grant as a county employee, I had to give them current year's budget to show that we were financially solvent to, uh, make our match, in a match grant, so, you know, it's not out heard for even the governments to have to provide financials, um, for granting information.
I'd also like to know if an organization is receiv- is already receiving multiple grants? So maybe we have two competing or, com- competing organizations, one has four incoming grants, one has none. And both are, are, uh, important issues to the community, that, that would be a factor that I would consider, so.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe, uh, current, current grants.
Well, and I will say on the, one of the, on a scoring factor, especially when you're asking for some of this, is, uh, they, you know, a lot of times, the organizations will have a set of priorities that you're scored on based on what you're asking for and going to provide in line with those said priorities. So, you know, if the county had a priority in saying, you know, for, I'm just gonna throw it right, whatever, housing, and then, you know, we have this scoring system that says, and when somebody applies-
That's coming up next, you're getting ahead of me.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, so, so, um, at the end of the, at the end of the budget cycle, we will have a complete breakdown of A R P funds. And we'll get that, I guess it would come from Frank. So we get that from Frank, it'd be a complete breakdown, so we know exactly where we are, what the balances are. Um, we can start the process on May first and complete it, uh, July first will be the closing date. First workshop, we'll discuss it, the first business meeting, we will approve it. And we will use that, uh, application, physical application, and then the accompanying documents would be a business plan, two-year financials, current profit-loss statement, and, uh, any current grant information that the organization has.
So I got a question, so if we start this in May, not knowing what the budget is gonna be, it might not be, I mean-
There may be no money.
There, yeah.
And, and that, we'll know that in July, and, and then at the first business meeting, we would-
But they'll be ahead of the game as far as-
We would announce that we don't have any money to give.
Because we use, I think, one point eight last year to help, um, balance. Yeah, okay, I know we've been, I've been, we've been far less informal.
Right.
You know, up to now.
And again, I'm looking for a fair and equitable way to do this, because, you know, we have the Food Bank come in, we have the Water District come in, we have some individuals come in that are really trying to add housing to the community. All are extremely important, um, and, and I don't want this to feel like Shark Tank, I want it to feel like there's a, a, a process that's fair and equitable. So, um, if there's no money, there's no money. If there's fifty thousand dollars, then we would make a difference about how that would be spent. If that's what we have, that's what we have.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so then, so-
Just so they know that going in, you know?
Yes, everybody knows-
That's, that, that's gotta be the, the goal, is-
Exactly, there's, it's like any grant, there's no guarantee.
Yeah.
Right? So we've got our timeline, we've got our format and structure to the actual application. So then the next thing that, that I think the people who are applying for grants should, should, uh, or would want to know is, what are this county's priorities? What is the list, is it, is it, uh, safety? Is it water? Is it housing? Is it, uh, what is it? What, and?
We might be able to talk about that in our priorities, yeah.
We'll have that.
Well, and, 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 and this would be my question to the two of you is, is would it be safe to say that those priorities are in line with the priorities of this funding?
I don't know.
Is that what we would want to do?
I don't know, I, I'd be, because I think in, you know, some of the internal priorities, um, getting organized, right?
Sure.
Don't really align, um, but we definitely have some, you know, our, our community priorities would certainly align, right? I would, I would, I would assume they would certainly align, so. Yeah, I think it's a great, um, way to identify what those are before eight, uh, May, in that meeting, or, yeah, May.
Well, maybe, and when you make your list of priorities, you know, your priorities, and then, but then, you're gonna have, you're gonna have priorities, but then you're gonna have specific action priorities that, that are gonna be limited to, to a, a short list.
Yeah.
And so I think that, that's just make that clear to, you know, to the public, so that everybody, cuz you'll have, you know, for example, you know, housing is a priority for the county, but, but we can only, you know, facilitate.
Right.
So.
Well, here would be an example, let's, let's say hypothetically, we identify the number one priority to be housing. And then we have a grant application for a person who, uh, an individual who wants to create, uh, a complex with twenty-five units. Obviously, that adds significant, uh, value to the housing problem. And, um, he's, he's submitted a, an application, uh, against, uh, the Water District and against, uh, some other community, uh, social issue. Then he would have priority because we've identified housing is the priority, correct?
If we create a scoring system, you know, there might be different metrics on differently, you know, in terms of financial stability and et cetera, et cetera.
Sure, sure.
But it certainly, um, would receive the highest priority score.
Because we had identified that. Okay. So then I think if we, if we use the external priorities in what you're doing, it would make sense that those external priorities would be, uh-
Align.
Along with, with the grant application, so they would know that.
Yeah. Yeah, governmental priorities might be a little bit different, like what we plan to achieve.
Right.
As opposed to what we're see, what we would like to see for the community to achieve, but-
Community priorities.
Yes, community.
So that's how you, yeah, that's how you-
Maybe redefine it that way, community priorities and governmental priorities. And, uh, that when a grant application is directly in line with community priorities, that obviously that's gonna score higher than one that is not.
Yeah, I mean, housing, employment, securities, food securities.
Sure.
You know, all those, you know, yeah, sure.
Okay. And then we'll be able to clarify that in the work that you do on, on establishing that.
Okay.
That work?
Works for me.
Seems like a pretty clear process.
Yeah, I will, we'll probably have to dial in some timelines, like when we're gonna know, you know, how we're gonna score, yada, yada, yada.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I, the, the process I liked a lot, certainly.
Okay.
Three of us could get the applications, and we score them, and then combine them.
Then we come together and say, well, where were you at?
This is, this is, you know.
Get an average, and, yeah, there we go.
Yep, okay. Um, any other questions on that?
No, good idea, great work.
All right, so then the next issue would be the, um, that I have on here is the, uh, generator failure. The annex generator failure. So the first thing that I think is important to clarify is, who's responsible for, uh, maintenance, ensuring that the proper working function? Which, which department is responsible for the checks and balances associated with the, with the machinery that's there? Cuz we, we, we have to ensure that, that those are a hundred percent functional.
So in the past, um, the Road Department has always managed all of our generators. It's another, it's an engine, so, you know, it was Bob and Rocky. And they would go up to Lobster Creek, and they would service our generator at Lobster Creek, and they would service all the generators. That was, that's how it was. Now, I don't know if that trend changed over time, um, but from what I'm kinda gathering, it, it has. And so I, you know, it, it, I, I do know that it worked, you know, cuz they had, you know, they had a, they had a schedule. And they'd simply just call and say, hey, do you got the keys to the gate? All right, let's go, we're gonna go up there, we're gonna take care of it. And-
Sounds like a good system to me.
It was a really good system, because they're the ones who were knowledgeable about how engines operate, you know, if they needed to fix something, if they needed to change something, they needed to order something. They knew what needed to happen. So, I mean, that seemed to work really well. I don't know how it changed or if it changed, but it worked.
I'm a little bit foggy on that, maybe you can help me, but, but so, the first generator failure last year, with, with the fuel issue. So, I remember I, I had saw references or heard that, that some, somebody had decided that we were gonna save money by, by not refueling it on a regu- I can't, I mean-
I don't remember hearing that, but-
It was, it was an odd thing, that, that, it was a, it was rumored that there was commi- Commissioner input in, in the oversight of that generator.
I don't, I, I don't remember that, ever, no.
I don't know, I don't know that either, it just seemed, I, it seemed odd, be- because, um, but there clearly is a, you know, I mean, when, when it happened, when it happened, we had to reach out to the Road Department, and Charles was trying to, you know-
Right.
Cat, playing catch-up and doing all that stuff, and there was clearly not a standard operating procedure that, that the parties were familiar with, that, that should have been seamless.
Yeah. So the Road Department takes care of all the other generators, why wouldn't they take care of this?
Well, you know, and I'll, so, so since I've been here, Tad was, he took care of that generator. He made sure every Wednesday at noon or whatever.
Tad did.
Tad did, and then Tad went to the Road Department. So it was always my understanding that it was maintenance, because I just associated it with Tad. And I, you know, when you were here, did, do you remember that generator coming on for fifteen minutes on a weekly basis?
Once a week, yeah, two.
So this is a thing we should, we should explore with the Road Department today at our meeting.
Yeah.
No.
Find out, cuz Tad's there now.
Yeah.
And, well, and, and so here, I would say there's-
And there's a generator in the bottom of the Sheriff's Building.
There's two different, there's two different, there was, there was the, the, the maintenance of it, and then there was the oversight, right? So I'll give you an instance for, you know, like Lobster Creek. I, I was the one making sure it doesn't run out of propane, and making sure that, you know, it was, it was in, in, in working order, like inspecting it more regularly.
Oil changes.
They were the ones who had it on a schedule, like to come up-
For servicing.
Three times a year to service it, to all those things. So I don't, yeah, I, I, I may have mis- misrepresented.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get caught up with, with what the Road Department perceives as its duties toward the, toward the generators, and what Tad did with maintenance, back when he was in maintenance, cuz maybe that's where, maybe that's where things changed, I'm not sure.
Yeah, what I wanna see, what I wanna see is a strict protocols and policy of who is responsible for what, so that we ensure with, as much as we can, that that's not gonna happen again. So, so we'll talk, when we, we have a meeting today at two-thirty at the Road Department, so we'll address that out there. And then, um, and then I, I, Ted should be able to, to lock that down, um, protocol-wise, what those responsibilities are. Then the other issue with that is, it's machinery, so it's gonna fail. It's going to fail again, uh-
This one you needed the most.
And when that happens, the server goes down. So do we want to have an outside server? So that when it, when that happens, we don't lose valuable information, the county doesn't shut down, and we continue to function.
Now, you, are you talking about to preserve information like a cloud-based?
Preserve information, not lose any information, ensure that, ensure the integrity of our system.
Because if, if we do lose generator in the midst of power, we still wouldn't have power. We shouldn't ha- wouldn't have access, but we wouldn't be losing vital information and having to rebuild it in a server that-
Like we've done twice now.
Yeah. I don't even know, I don't, that's, I have, that's so far past my I T understanding, I, I don't- I don't even know, I don't, that's, I have, that's so far past my I T understanding, I, I don't even know what the costs are.
I have problems with this, so I.
You know, what that looks like, you know, I'm assuming that's a lot of storage and information in a cloud-based system. It'd be interesting to see what those numbers are.
Okay, we can, we can ask.
I do remember talking to the clerk's office one time about, and, and there was a fellow that was hooked up with Homeland Security. And he wanted that, and it was something about, we take this information, put it on something and, and store it in Bend, Oregon. So it, you know, a big one comes, we have, you know, we. Yeah.
So.
On a disk or a, I, I don't know exactly, but there was talk of that.
How about we do two things? Ted can check and see on a cost, see, see what, basically what that cost is, just to ensure the integrity of that system. So we don't lose valuable information and we don't incur some enormous cost when, when it happens. And then I would also like to direct Monica to see if there is any grants out there for, that are Homeland Security related. Or such that might, might cover some of those costs or all of the costs. And if there are, then we can pursue, potentially pursue a grant for that, if it fits.
So I spoke, I.
That's no brainer.
I talked to Brent Bischoff at Kuzkure Electric about that, some of this earlier this week, and it was. I, it was a, a battery backup question. And, well, I've heard two minutes, and he's saying, no, battery backup is ten minutes. You have, once, once that thing doesn't start, you have ten, it, that's gonna keep things going for ten minutes. And then that's, you know, that's, that's the battery backup for I T. So what about making it a bigger battery backup, a thirty minute or even an hour or so? People have time to get stuff, you know, cause I don't know what, how long it was when that, it didn't come on and the lights didn't, but then it finally did. Do you know how long that time period was?
I don't know exactly, it, it was within an hour, you know, that, that Charles was down here.
Yeah.
And changed the battery and then it get cranked on. I couldn't imagine what the battery situation would look like to power all of our facilities for an hour, that would be pretty impressive.
Oh, I, I don't, is it, I don't know, I.
I'm just assuming, cause there's a lot of energy consumption.
I think, I just think of those little black things underneath my desk, that's a battery backup, right? For my computer?
What? Yeah. Yeah.
It's okay Elizabeth.
So I don't know about that, I'm just saying, you know, that'd be something we could ask Dan.
Yeah, well, I'll ask him, I'll ask him, we can look at battery backups, isn't it? I know, I, I think, cause, cause the problem is, there's a lot that, that is driven by that. And even, I mean, even if it was just somehow confined just to the computers, I don't exactly, I mean.
Well, we're still also talking, negotiating with Kuzkure Electric.
Right.
For I T services, so maybe we can kind of.
Yeah, we'll ask them.
Pull that in, do that.
Yeah.
It might not be feasible, I don't know.
We'll find out.
But we can include that in that, in that part of the discussion, so we can, do we agree on that too?
Yeah, oh, it's definitely good to, I think, investigate for sure.
All right, answers, questions? You're good?
What I was looking for.
Okay, very good. It's public comment time. We got, public comment just walked in, Brent Thompson from Bopta, Val Early's here, Dave's here.
I don't wanna public comment, I wanna comment as elected official, David Barnes, county treasurer.
What's your address, we need all that info.
Uh, nine four two three five Moore Street, Suite one twenty-four, I believe. The first thing on your list was the rules of order, and you tied public comments into that also. The other day, when there was a meeting in here, we had a meeting about, on Monday, I believe it was, about North Bank Road. And you'd asked for public comments, and at the end of it, I stood up to ask about the cost of the thing. And it was implied at that time that this was another public comment session, and it was not. It was directed to, to you from my office. Standard procedure has always been that if there's an issue that involves the sheriff's department or a department here, if you have a human resources question, Julie's watching the meeting in her office. She comes down and asks her the question for you. I think, I'd like you to see, make sure that there remains a differentiation between public comment and staff and elected comments. Because this was something that, you know, that impact, the, what you're gonna spend on this impacted me and, and my office. So I felt that I had the obligation and, and the authority to come in and ask about it. So I just want, as you're doing it, I'd like to make sure that that remains in place, that ele- other, that electeds and department heads who it pertains to them and their function. That they're still allowed to ask questions when a topic comes up, and not just part of the general public comment piece.
Can I just make a comment real quick, I agree with that. And all I think, you know, I think the misunderstanding that we had is, when I call for a vote or a motion, we got a motion and a second. When I ask for discussion, I, I usually assume that that's just the three of us.
Oh, I do, I do too, but I, before.
You didn't get a chance to.
I didn't get a chance to, I didn't get a chance to pipe up before you got to that part, so.
That's, that was my, that was my only.
Not a problem.
Can I, can I speak on that too?
Yeah, sure.
The, the one thing that I think that would also help with, with all of this is, especially having a director of operations. Is now, when an agenda comes out and you see that it's going to be something that could potentially impact you, you can have a, you have a single person you can ask, hey, I know you're working on this, how much is this gonna cost? And also, that should also be reciprocated forward as well, so, so that, so that those, a lot of those questions could be answered prior to. And then if you have questions about those answers.
Right.
And that might be something that comes.
It was just, you know, it was something, there was a whole conversation about doing this, but there was no discussion about the cost of it. So, you know, that was just something that I.
That nobody knows.
No, I do, it was just something I wanted to be aware of, you know, because I might have to move money around, make money available to do something like this, so. On the rules of order portion also, if you guys are gonna, if you and Ted are gonna work on this, I'd be glad to, to participate with you on that. To put together a set of rules of order for how meetings are conducted, stuff like that, so. Next was the liaisons. I, that'll hash itself out with the director of operations, I'm not sure. I don't really have anything to say about that then. I do like the idea of a priorities list and, and having goals, if you don't have goals, how do you know when you get where you're going? So, and I think that's important. The procedure for handing out money. I, I absolutely agree with what you're doing, I, I do question the timeline though, if you. We're gonna ask people on May first to, to start submitting applications when we won't know if we have money for them till July first. And I'm wondering if maybe you wanna consider, once the budget is done and approved, and we know how much money might be available. Starting to process, the application process July first, having them in by August fifteenth gives you two weeks. And on September first, you, you grant money to people if there is any available. I know myself, I would be frustrated if I was, as a, as an entity, if I spent, doing a grant application, J U knows, is a process. And it takes quite a while, it's a commitment to get it done. And to do one in May in hopes of getting money come July, and then finding out on June fifteenth or June thirtieth that there is no money available. Would be, I would find that to be frustrating and, and annoying. So I would, you know, I would just ask you to reconsider your timeline on that. So I, I know that we're just in a workshop today and nothing is done in stone, so.
It would help a little bit, cause you know, you know going in, there might not be, but it.
Yeah, no, good, good point.
This grant application isn't like grant applications, or is it?
Well, but even so, I think it's, you know, you're committing and, and, and it would be better to know, you know, if you, if you're, if you're expending work on it. It would be better to know if you're talking about fifty dollars or fifty thousand dollars or, you know.
Right, we, you know, we announced when the budget is done that there's this, we have a pot of money that's two hundred thousand dollars that we can make available to, to community-based organizations or other groups.
That conform with the county's priority list.
Well, and it also for, it also gives us more of, of a scope on, on maximum and minimum size of grant opportunities.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Good point, dude.
Okay, and that was it, thank you.
Val, you didn't drive all the way up here to not to say something, I know it. Okay, Brent? Okay. All right, so Brad Alcorn, Brent Thompson, Brent is on the Bopta board, so we did that yesterday. Okay, how you doing? Okay. All right, well, if there is no more public comment and you, nothing else to hash out. We're adjourned, thanks for coming, thanks for all the input, thank you guys.